Order this work session for the normal town council. Call the role, please.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Byers.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Preston. Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Work session tonight is to cover a couple of different topics. Uptown parking study, which has been done to take a look at our, our, our needs for taking a look at some of the mechanizations. I don't think that's a word. Yep. Take a look at uptown parking and EV charging network plan, which staff has been working on. Turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We're going to take the first hour or so, hour to hour and fifteen minutes, to talk about the uptown parking study. Mr. Hanson, Mr. Hune, maybe Ms. Trippak. I'm not sure who all is going to be involved in the conversation, but we want to talk to you a little bit about the study, the recommendations, and then not get any formal council action tonight because, of course, because this is work session, but to get some sort of feel for how council might react to some of these issues. And then on anything that might require council action, we'll come back at a, at a later date with a formal recommendation and approval. And then if time permits, we would like to take about thirty minutes, no more than that, to talk about an EV charging network program that we would like to coordinate. So I'm going to ask Mr. Hanson to take, to take over the conversation here with the uptown parking study.
Sure, thank you. I will provide some, some brief, brief comments and then, and turn it over to Mr. Hune and, and Ms. Trippak to kind of walk through a, a formal PowerPoint. But I think from an overview perspective in the report that I know was emailed to you at the front, I think it's on page four as an executive summary, and that, that kind of provides an overview as to the process and what, what we tried to undertake with the study, which actually started clear back in the fall of 2021. We were coming out of COVID and the pandemic. Events were starting back up. We were looking at parking availability and future development. And then obviously by that point, we were moving forward on the uptown connector and so understanding that some things in the future, you know, would happen on the south side of the tracks. And so did an RFP, received a number of proposals, I think four or five, if I remember correctly, back from the, the council action report. Ultimately selected Desmond Design out of Chicago. They were in town a couple of weekends in the fall of 21, and then we asked them for an update here in 2023. Now that we're fully out of the pandemic and, and the decks utilization and uptown parking utilization is, is pretty much back to normal. We wanted to just confirm that the numbers that we undertook back in 2021 were still, still solid. And, and the results came back pretty much the same. They both occurrences were evaluated in the fall after the students were back while events were still going on. And the data and the study kind of speaks for itself. But from an overview perspective, you know, we tried to accomplish a few things. One is to identify and I, and, and understand availability across the spectrum, not just in the decks, but on street and in the lots. We wanted to fully evaluate our process and operations of, of how we manage parking. And then obviously a key component, which, you know, I think we need to get feedback from council, is the, the ongoing and future maintenance of our various parking structures. And most notably is the parking decks, which are the most expensive, but, but also the lots as well. And so a lot of what you'll see in, in Mr. Hune's presentation, you know, kind of focuses on those, those key elements, along with confirming and providing council the information and the data they needed that as development occurs even into the future, that, that you are comfortable that there is a strategy and/or, or data that would support future developments that, that may and will ultimately occur in uptown. And so that's just kind of an overview. Please, you know, understand it is, is just an evaluation like any other study. You know, we asked them for recommendations based on best practices, but I will throw in the caveat that, you know, we fully recognize the hot potato that is parking and parking discussions in literally every community USA. So this study does not take those things into account, although I can reassure you that the staff that were involved are, you know, very mindful of some of the challenges that, that occur anytime changes are made to parking, regardless of what community you're in. But the study does point out what they believe, and the recommendations are reflective of best practices and/or ideas that, that ultimately they think would benefit the town. And so that's kind of the impetus and that, and you know, it'll be on, you know, a combination of, of you, the elected body, town staff and the community to decide which of those would ultimately get implemented. So that's kind of the purpose. We'll, we'll, I'll turn it over to Andrew to kind of walk through the, the core components of the study and then obviously be available to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Yeah, as, as Mr. Hanson mentioned, parking seems like a pretty basic, easy word, but it's quite, quite not in terms of those things. We can discuss any part of the study that you'd like to discuss. I'm going to, I'm going to show slides that, that address the recommendations. We'll try to give council a, a sense of what the consultants were thinking about, how they interpret their, their recommendations, give some staff comment, of course, about them. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll be circling back to you in an informal way about what do you think about certain things that you want us to do in terms of direction for parking? This will be a team approach. I, I've been around parking for a number of years and I have very deep knowledge about some parts of parking and other parts I know to be, to be dangerous. So we'll see how this goes, but Ms. Reese, Mr. Hanson, Ms. Trippak, God, I could also add if we have to get in more detail, more detailed. The, the parking study addressed kind of five different categories. You see them there, kind of applied technologies, of course, rates and, and fees, how management improvements, energy improvements and access and supply allocation. And, and the point of all that was their sense is no recommendation can, can entirely solve the problem when you take an incremental approach and kind of a comprehensive approach to, to managing parking. And that process can evolve over time as things in the nature of, of, of the town changes in terms of its, its activity and businesses and restaurants and so forth. And also there's a, a fundamental underlying decision being made here, not tonight, but to discuss going forward is, is on-street charger on-street parking and lot parking. Right now, as you know, we don't do that. It's just charging parking within the parking decks and on-street and, and surface lot is a time limited charge. So the first recommendation that the parking study calls out is to install a credit card payment and enable in single space meter and, and/or multi-space stations for on-street parking and for off-street parking. These are parking lots. This will certainly generate more revenue, but we're going to circle back later on to get, to get the council a sense of, of how they feel about moving to a, a paid system for on-street and lots. We have one hundred and thirty-one spaces on the street. We have four hundred and fifty-six spaces in parking lots. These are all essentially free unless you stay over the two or three hour limit and you are charged a fee. It would generate more revenue. As you're aware, that we're involved in switching to a new parking system within the decks, we, we would have, that system would, would could easily move into on-street and lot parking to have a mechanism for payment. So that, that is available. But again, on a lot of these recommendations, we'll go through them, we'll go through them slowly and then we'll circle back to get your thoughts through the end. Certainly one of them in terms of just how we fundamentally feel about on-street charging for parking in the lots. The second recommendation that's been made is retain the pay by phone service provider to facilitate virtual parking fees, collection, communicate public parking system rates, policies and available spaces. This is a little bit similar to the first recommendation, talking about, you know, a, a pay system on the street. The, the new parking system that we're going to look at for the, for the town parking decks has what I would characterize as a, as a very, very strong software approach, a mobile app that will help you pay in the deck. If we were to utilize on-street parking, we would use that system on the street also. I know that there's, I think the first page there showed some kiosks there. Those are what the, that's part of the recommendation in the report, but the system we have would actually be a little more advanced than that. We would not have hard system kiosks. We'd have signage and overpay application for certain spaces along the street and in the parking decks themselves. So if we chose to go down that route, we do have a system available in the new parking system for the decks that could accommodate a pay-by-phone system for, for paying parking. This next recommendation where they want us to relocate the parking access and control system, that's essentially the parking hardware you see when you drive in to get your ticket or to, or have your proxy card read deeper into the deck. This was a recommendation we looked at for probably a couple of years and it was trying to solve a queuing problem with traffic. This is no longer going to be an issue considering that we're going to a gateless system and a new parking system. So in the past, if there was an issue at the entrance of the parking deck due to a bad read or a, a system person leaving, it backed up traffic pretty significantly and the flow would be restricted. And, and that, that was an obvious possible change. That would have taken away a lot of spaces in the depth. We, we essentially moved up to the first or second floor and then make more, more space to drive in and out of vehicles, more entry, exit way. But at this time, the recommendations have come a little bit obsolete in terms of our new process for going to a gateless system on the parking decks. So we're not going to need to implement that as we thought we need to a few years ago and now during the parking study. And just, just so you know, I don't know how much information you have on the parking deck. The new system, when I say gateless, it means you can drive through, there'd be no stopping to enter the deck. So there'd be free flowing traffic in and then free flowing traffic out. You have to stop for the gate, but it'll look for you once it sees the car there. So again, you're not being locked in the gate. So we, we think we really solved the, the free flow of parking in the deck. We haven't got to move those systems up in the first, second floor. The next recommendations to acquire on what they call LPR, automatic license plate recognition technology. We do have this now. We use it for time limits on the street and the ser, and the surface lots. So we, we, this technology would be enhanced more. We are going to be adopting this technology in the parking decks very soon, where we use license plate picking recognition to read person coming in and coming out. We have, we currently have a vehicle that drives around and, and checks lots and, and surface streets for parking violations, again, over the limit. The system that we have in place now with that and with, with passport and we get a tech, we could utilize a more robust view if we were to go to on-street and, and lot, lot charges. So we have it, we have it now. We're going to grow that more into the parking decks as part of a, a strategy for parking. And with that technology, we can enhance that further if we go to an on-street payment system and a lot payment system. We use that, that part for that very functionality. The next is to kind of transition to a virtual parking permit via, again, LPR system. Lots of advantages to that. And actually we're, we're on route to have that also happen. Right now, the, the membership process or the, the permit process is, is fairly manual to maintain. You get a, you get a proxy card or a hang tag to get into, into the parking deck or use one of the lots. It, it's a process that's manual. The new system would actually switch to a virtual permit system where you can apply online. You can do online, you can activate it, we can activate inside the house. We have a lot more controls over issuance, activation, controlling users, we reduce fraud. And there'd be a lot, essentially a lot of savings with that. So we are going to this online virtual ticket. Basically like if you're a permit holder, then we have your information, but the plate is what your permit is, is looking for. So you drive into the parking deck, it sees your plate, you're a valid user. You can go in and out as much as you want versus having to stop using your proxy card in and out. We can use all, also, this is also connected to our, our daily pay systems too for the parking deck in the future. And this would be roughly utilized if we had kind of permitting process outside that. So we are moving to that process. We're, we're glad to get rid of the old way of doing things because the new system provides a lot more functionality, both online, virtual, for parking permits. The area that the consultant looked at was our, our fees and, and rate charges. They, they have recommended that we consider discontinuing the first hour free. The first hour is free for this deck and College Street deck. To give you some history on that, that was implemented right away when the decks were first built. The idea was to provide kind of ease of use and encourage use of the parking decks. Some of you were here when we, when we first built the decks. They were, they were a bit intimidating to some people at first. I think that the systems have matured now and, and we could, we could consider getting rid of that first hour free. It is used quite a bit in terms of, of transit going in and out, dropping people off here at the, at the station, visiting the station at the college deck that mostly using for retail shopping and so forth. But they are suggesting we consider looking at eliminating that. That would be a financial gain to the town because we have a lot of users in that first hour free when we pick that up. In fact, with the, that, that's this first hour free for this deck and College Street, not for the Buford deck, the Marriott Hotel deck. That one's always, always a dollar an hour. And that deck actually does pretty well because it picks that first hour. But that's something we want, we want to consider at the end of the presentation to kind of get your thoughts on, on where you stand in terms of that first hour free. To give you some context to that, if we were to limit the first hour free, at most about $20,000 more a year in revenue, we estimate coming in. Now, some folks might change their behavior if they haven't got that anymore. The, the study said that wasn't likely, but it's a possibility where you might have people changing. They don't, they don't come to the deck anymore. But we have about 20,000 parking sessions an hour on both those decks and that would equate to about a dollar more under our current, our current structure for, for rates. Another area they touched upon was this idea of dynamic pricing. To give you a sense of that, we have what we call static pricing now. Static pricing is, it's consistent pricing. It's a dollar an hour, a max of six dollars for the day, eight bucks you can stay overnight. A dynamic pricing model essentially tries to, one, it creates more revenue, but two, it's trying to drive some behavior. What it does is it changes the price of a spot or an area where you park based on the high demand need or the congestion that might be associated with that. So by way of example, if one, one part of the street in uptown is heavily used during certain parts of the day, it's considered pretty convenient parking to park next to the restaurant or your store. That's currently now free. There is a school of thought, which in, in parking, it says make the most convenient high demand spots more expensive and make the ones less convenient, less expensive. So part of this is to recognize that there are busy times, there are busy areas that we could leverage more, more of a dynamic pricing model. One, to collect revenue, but two, dollars to drive behavior. It would have more turnover for the businesses in terms of activity. Cars wouldn't be there all the time and it might push folks into less, less expensive areas, but they're further away. So that is an area of discussion. If we were to implement something like that, it would take some policy guidance. It would take some management, of course, and we need to decide on what exactly are the high demand areas, which we can, this actually provides some of that for us and where we want to do that pricing, uh, pricing. If your pricing could change during the day, on the weekends for special events, again, all of you, we kind of worked out from a manager perspective, but the system that we are going to implement with the parking decks in terms of that, that parking software would be able to handle that kind of dynamic pricing on the streets also in the lots. So again, we're going to circle back to kind of get your sense on how, how you're feeling about doing a dynamic pricing model. Another recommendation was to kind of empower a, a single person with all the necessary skills of managing your parking system. Currently, the, the parking for the town is managed by several departments. INT, of course, finance, facilities, admin, legal communications, and, and staff is kind of considering the option of consolidating those, those roles to a single person for just parking alone. There are agreements, there's maintenance, there's policy procedures in place, there's rate discussions. There's a lot that goes into parking that all of us can answer between the team, but there is some efficiency that might be gained by having a single person be that knowledge base and managing all those areas. Again, some of the staff is going to consider for a recommendation in the future, but we are looking at it as a possibility. Parking amenities improvements, three recommendations here. The first is to relocate town employees and fleet parking from the uptown station deck to Buford deck. And, and this is to optimize transit parking availability. We don't have an issue right now. We do have several fleet vehicles parked in, in this deck that could be relocated to an area that, that, that's less used. And then of course free of space for, for people to use the deck in terms of transit users. We're, we're looking at that as a possibility. I think they selected Buford Street parking deck because it, it's probably one of the ones that has the lease occupancy, but there are other options to put, to park those facility vehicles that besides the parking deck. So we're exploring that also as a possibility. Next one is to explore the feasibility and cost benefit of introducing a discount parking validation for businesses. We, we have a validation program in place right now, but related to the parking decks. If we were to implement something on-street or on the parking lots, again, kind of that convenient parking at, at, at an appropriate price, our systems, we do have systems that we'll have in place to, to manage that. So we need to look at the cost benefit of introducing more of a, of a validation program for businesses if, of course, to go to this on-street parking and, and surface lot parking charging. The third one there is to offer Constellation East and West developer is the ground space on College Avenue parking deck. Again, you heard from me with that, that's essentially an unused part of that parking deck and the ground space. It's used for, for staging construction materials and storage, but it could be utilized for, for more parking spaces. And, and the idea from the consultant there is simply to offer that up as, as perhaps an incentive to say, if you do this development, we would provide this or we would do it for you and, and you'd have the parking. Either way, it's, it's an idea to develop, a way to develop that either through a developer or through us, through incentive and to make more parking spaces available. I think the report listed somewhere around fifty more spaces could be obtained in that parking deck if we were to utilize that space for parking, which is a consideration. Another was to initiate a policy that would control the granting of free parking validations by government office at the town hall. This mostly relates to Amtrak parking or like discount parking programs. Currently, you can park for free if you're an Amtrak parker, if you're an Amtrak traveler, you park in the top floor of the College Street deck. That is provided free by the town for, for those travelers. It's not super convenient, of course. Again, the, the most inconvenient spaces, the freest and, and the high demand convenience space are typically charged the most. That's the general philosophy in parking and honestly what we're going to do here, but it's, it's a possibility. And also we have some other discount parking through agreements and so forth. So their, their point there is simply to look at that as an organization, decide, do you still want to continue that? And then what discount should be available for, for businesses from, to the government? Again, this, we'll circle back to at the end to kind of get your thoughts on how you feel about that long-term parking. In terms of quantitatively, for the spaces, for that, for people that travel on Amtrak and utilize that free parking service, we discounted $50,000 last year in '23. We're at $40,000 now through October. So it is a sizable discount that people are getting. It's a convenience for them to get it for free. It's a bit of a walk to drag your luggage all the way to the uptown station, but it is free. Again, that was something we had, we put into place when we built the decks. Again, ease and of use and encourage use of the decks and, and to make the available free parking for long-term, long-term Amtrak travelers. But it does cost the town some revenue loss with it. Our recommendations, design and install standardized reserved parking space signs to relieve confusion. This mostly relates to any kind of parking lots that we have that are close to private businesses where over time the, the private business has had some ownership of those, those spaces and it's a bit confusing when you drive in there. If you're a general public user, what's available for public use, what's available for private use or has been reserved. So they're just suggesting that we kind of review those agreements very closely and, and, and leave it, make it more standardized, make it more clear, which is always a good idea. The second one here is to introduce new wayfinding to parking facility ID. That, that's, that's a scheme we want to do town-wide. This is something we're working on right now for the parking decks. We're in the process of, as you know, implementing a new parking system. There's new signage for that coming up, but there's always going to be a wayfinding need for, for comprehensively for the town to deal with this way for this lot, this way for the parking deck. These spaces are available during this time and, and the goal is to make it clear and simple and understandable. I think we all face signs that are very confusing at times to read and span and, and they have some suggestions, but I think their, the goal there is simply to make it, make it straightforward and simple and clear. So there's going to be a, a bit more review of what makes the most sense in terms of a, a wayfinding for all the parking in uptown, uptown area. Certainly part, part signage is, 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 is science in their heart and many ways to make sure that's done well. Another, another, in terms of access and supply allocation, create an Amtrak pickup and drop-off spaces on the south side of the tracks. Once the under, under pass is completed, that is currently under review and studied too. It would be kind of a, a natural spot for that, to have that robust movement between the two, the south and north, so that, that's always a possibility to consider making a drop-off space there for, for such activity. In terms of parking rates, some information to share here. Operationally, the decks, they, they get close to breaking even. We, we do have a bit of an operating deficit when it comes to just the, the daily and monthly revenue versus the operating expense of payroll and liability and operating supplies. We do have some deficit there in the out-years because we set, we set the rates a number of years ago and haven't changed in some period of parking decks. And, and expenses continue to, to rise. However, what we don't account for in operations are when we have capital spending on the decks that are significant. Mr. Hanson mentioned it in terms of what we have to do. We spend anywhere, we budget anywhere from a hundred and fifty, $200,000 a year for capital maintenance to decks. That's not part of this overall. We already have a small deficit, you top on the, the capital need, it becomes a significant deficit. We also don't necessarily allocate a lot of debt service related to the parking decks to the parking operation. So we, we really do have an operation that is, that is not being fully supported by the rates and absolutely. So if there is a, an appetite to raise rates, we certainly have more than enough justification to make that happen in terms of the overall cost of running the parking decks. Operationally, we get close to some deficits, but we have long-term maintenance needs, sinking fund needs, capital needs and need to be satisfied that we are not able to manage through the operating rates right now. To review the, the rates we have right now for parking, we have, of course, street parking decks. It's basically an, an hour per deck or an hour, a dollar per hour, six dollar max and then two dollars if you stay overnight for eight dollars max. The first hour is free in the college deck and uptown station deck. And then the Sundays are also free on those decks. We have a, an eight-hour standard permit for Buford deck, that's the Marriott deck. It's, there are some, actually quite a few permits there, but the, the lion's share of our permits are in college deck and they're forty dollars a month or twenty bucks a month for certain businesses that are, that are in the uptown area that, that are eligible. And those rates again have been in, in force since the parking decks were built. So I went through that pretty quickly. We can certainly go back to any, any side you want or discuss anything in more detail, but we, we are kind of at a, a point now where we, we'd like to get a sense of where the council stands on a couple of these items. Laid out ones we would like to get your thoughts on in terms of direction or just some guidance. We can certainly bring them more if we need to. The first is, is simply, is the council, you know, do they feel that they're ready to have a rate adjustment in terms of we react to them a dollar an hour for, for many years? You've been forty bucks a, a, a month for the, the, the rate. We, we're not necessarily going to be recommending anything to you right now. We, we do have some comparable studies ongoing, trying to find where the parking decks are at in, in the general area that we live, basically Midwest and, and, and our area of pure governments, where we're just going to get a sense of how the council feels about raising those rates or changing them. First hour free, what's the, the temperature of the council on that? And then also eliminating free parking for Amtran patrons. That, that, that's been ongoing for a long time. And a lot of this comes out of the fact of are we, and then a big one is paid on-street and service lot parking. What's the appetite for the council collectively to consider moving to a, an on-street paid parking and also lot parking? And of course, And of course, when we do that kind of thing, if the answer is, yeah, we can look at that, then we'd also kind of figure out a pricing model. In terms of pricing model, again, if it's convenience space, it's going to be a higher rate, and usually the parking deck rate should be the lowest rates you have compared to those rates on a high-demand, very convenient spaces. And if that's the case, do you want to look at dynamic pricing also? Those, that's kind of my presentation. You can certainly go back to different slides and look at the pages in the actual study, but I'll turn it back to city manager Reese for any more comments or follow-up.
Thanks, Mr. Hune. So that is the parking study in a nutshell, in terms of the recommendations. As mentioned earlier, we don't need, you know, any discussion tonight does not mean immediate action or immediate change. It allows staff to then plan accordingly. For example, if council wanted to implement one of these changes that pertain to parking on-street or dynamic pricing or the like, we could delay any of that until after underpass construction is done. You know, everything is nimble right now. We're just seeking council opinion, correctly. I do think there's a couple of takeaways to keep in mind and reiterate. Right now, in most communities, I think Mayor and I have discussed this many times, and mayors discussed this even with the previous city manager many, many times, you don't, most communities don't have your most convenient parking as the free parking. We're a little bit different. We've been opposite of that. That's something we want to figure out how council feels. Maintenance of parking decks is a marathon. We can't wait till the end of the race and then realize we didn't save any money to maintain our decks. That, you know, we don't want to, using Mr. Clinch's term, we don't want to run to fail. I don't think we do. But so that's something we need to talk about, and whether or not we're raising enough money for long-term planning, or if the council's decision is, no, we don't want to implement, you know, regular rate increases, then we will have to figure out alternative funding sources for that sort of thing. But deck maintenance long-term is an expensive proposition. And then, as reiterated through this presentation, some of the recommendations of the report have organically already begun, because we were presented with an opportunity or a need to change our deck management system by the end of the year to the new system, or includes some of these things that are recommended. So we're a little bit a step ahead in that regard. So with that, it's now just open council discussion on what you're comfortable with and not comfortable with.
Well, I think this is something that's kind of been on the horizon, kind of peeking over our shoulder for a long time, in the sense of the elephant in the room, is we're going to have some very high expenses coming down the road in terms of maintaining our parking decks, and parking decks are not inexpensive to maintain. As Andrew pointed out, we're kind of eating those expenses now, but as those decks get older and require more significant capital investment, we're going to have to decide where those dollars come from. We're kind of a unique community in the fact that we do offer so much free parking. If you look at communities around us, they're virtually not our size that offer that. It is a change that is going to be hard for some people to take a look at if we decide to go that way, but I think we have to be able to look at a sustainable and manageable parking scenario to support the decks, the businesses that need quality parking in the Uptown area and the ability to maintain our structures. So I think, I won't say carte blanche, let's just say yes to everything and let's go. That's obviously not the case. But I think you had four very specific questions that you wanted answered tonight, and I think that'd be helpful for council.
I think my notes are in my bag here, so I didn't pull them out. I think the questions pertain to, how does council feel about, you know, modifying and adjusting our parking rates, and maybe a plan to regularly modify. At a dollar an hour for 12, 15 years, that doesn't really produce a whole lot of revenue long-term, particularly if, you know, present value. So, you know, what does council feel about that, some regular rate review and increases? How do you feel about first hour free? I think for the most part, many of you have told me just off the record in past conversations that we, you would like to maintain first hour free if possible, so just need to talk about that. And then, at what point is council comfortable if we did make a change to the free parking situation for Amtrak users? They, we have had free parking since this building opened for Amtrak users, so 2012, so 11 years of free Amtrak parking. Should that go on forever, or is there some point when it makes sense to charge for parking? And then what have I missed? I think there was...
Paid on-street and...
Oh, yeah, exactly, yes. How does council feel about considering at some point a fee to park on-street and in surface lots?
Aaron, you want to go ahead?
I'll weigh in on the questions. I see the need in the rationale for increasing the rates, so I'm open to that. But before we decide anything, I'd like to see the numbers crunch of how much specific rate increases would bring in, and weigh that against public reception to sets items. I know our dollar an hour is considered extremely reasonable for people coming down from Chicago, because I was at a move-in event for the university, and they were looking where to park, and I said, well, go over to the garage there. And I said, if you park all day, the maximum is $8 an hour. And I paid $8, I mean, $8 for the whole day. I paid $8 an hour to park in Chicago, so it's a different perception of the parking rates. I am in favor of retaining the first hour free. We've had complaints about people using the circle for drop-off. I'm afraid if we got rid of the first hour rate, when we're trying to encourage people to use the garage to drop people off and to wait for somebody, we're discouraging that if we eliminate the free aspect of that. And likewise with the College Deck, that is intended to handle library overflow, and since we don't have a large amount of parking at the library, even though the other lot is available for now, I wouldn't want to discourage people from using the library because they're having to pay for parking to do that. As far as the Amtrak free parking, we used to use that, and it was nice if you were going to be gone for either a weekend or even longer, but we've broken down and saying, it's a lot more convenient when you're running late, just park in the garage and hop down. So I think it's a, it is getting people to park there who are willing to trek their luggage that block and down the elevators and block over to here. So I don't, I'm not one that would easily push for that because I think it is a bonus. You get free parking at the airport, both here and in Peoria. I would hate to have people say, well, if I flew somewhere, I'm not adding this expense. And so that would be one reason why I would not want to eliminate the free parking for Amtrak. And then in terms of the dynamic pricing, I can see a value of adding, having a higher rate for the on-street parking and possibly having a limit even to how long you're parking there, so that somebody says, well, I'm going to use this as my parking while I am here eight hours a day, and I'm willing to pay that, because if businesses need the turnover, I think there needs to be some rational limits to how long you can claim that space.
Thanks, Andrew, and the many people who touched this plan that I know we've been talking about for quite a while. Just kind of jumping to the point on some of the questions here. So I will echo the thought and the reasoning behind keeping the first hour free in the decks. That's something that has been important to me from the start, and I think that Ms. Smith made good arguments, both for Uptown Station Deck as well as the College Avenue one. I would just also add to that for myself, if the, one of the driving narratives in the context of this conversation is that, you know, we may be looking at this backwards where the quote-unquote least convenient parking is the most expensive. I think by increasing the cost of the decks, kind of just, I mean, it totally contradicts the notion that we want the decks to be more reasonably priced. I think the first hour free is in that spirit, and I think that's right in line with that rationale. I am open to rate adjustments for time beyond that first hour. I'm also open to Amtrak not being free for Amtrak patrons. I think, I mean, having a daily max, which we do, helps to offset, you know, just a continual running clocks if you're taking the train up to Chicago for a night or two. I think that that helps, but prioritizing Amtrak riders over anybody else who is, you know, patronizing Uptown for anything else in that deck. I mean, I, you know, I would be comfortable with eliminating the free Amtrak as part of the decks, so that's where I'm at.
Kevin?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hune, and echoing everyone else who's touched on this and this conversation has been going on for a long time. I remember attending an LC Series Track, and parking in central business districts was part of it. I think that was five, six, seven, eight years ago, and the shock that people heard we charged for our decks but not for our most valuable on-street, and everything back then was suggesting that we flipped the script. I guess looking at this in totality, I know the questions are asking us for individual components, and I know that we're being presented the individual components, but I looked at this as a system, and I read the objective is efficient parking and management and flow of parking, and probably not too secondarily, parking infrastructure funding going forward. So with that, it seems to me raising parking structure fees would put increased pressure on on-street parking if it remained free. That seems antithetical to our goals. And so a parking structure increase in fee, I think certainly is warranted, given how cheap it's been for how long it's been. But I think that we should consider, and I am open to some on-street parking charges. I don't know what that means, though, and I think that warrants discussion of how that would be structured, how would we implement it? Would it be uniform on all streets, et cetera? There's a lot of shushing out, I think, to do, but I think to do one without the other would start to shift the burden unduly onto the free lots and free on-streets, which is the minority of our parking and some of our most highly utilized, according to the studies, parking spaces. So I think we ought to consider those as companion actions. Maybe not everything all at one time, but I'd encourage us to look at that in that light. In terms of the other questions, first hour free, I guess, again, putting that all together, should we consider a shorter time versus a whole hour, or is it 30 minutes for free? To encourage, certainly for those that have transient or transactional business in Uptown, they're starting to get picked up something, something short-term, that we have some capacity, but that's not necessarily in our most expensive right-in-front of a business, but that we make some accommodation for that, but maybe not a whole hour, and for some of the reasons cited and some of the revenue concerns or revenue motivations, rather. Also, I'm not concerned, Mr. Preston basically read my thoughts on the Amtrak folks. I get, I suppose, we want to attract Amtrak passengers for a whole host of reasons, but I'm not sure that we should prioritize them so much above everybody else. So if we do, are there other tier structures that we consider for Amtrak? Is there a flat rate that we charge for them versus everything else? So I realize I'm suggesting things that may be just impossible to manage, so I don't know what that actually means when I say that, so just something to consider. Certainly open to dynamic pricing. Everywhere I've been, that's happened. Every conference I've been, every event I've been to, diamond armor pricing's in place, so I think that that's certainly appropriate here. And I guess the only other view in the two swipes I took through this report is certainly starting to think about this in terms of who's using our parking and why, and then mobility-challenged folks and what we do with them. What accommodations do we make? Not necessarily in our fee structures, but where that's located and how. I know we've had some challenges with that in the past. As we start to motivate people to behave differently in parking, how do we accommodate that? Thanks.
I think you and I were on the same thought train there. I just made a note before we started discussion that for the first hour, maybe a half hour, to, again, the people that are just coming in, they're running in, running out, give them that opportunity and it would work for them, but we're still generating that revenue if people are staying longer. I think, too, something that's going to be helpful in the decision-making broader going forward is, staff's going to want to know, or no, I'm sorry, council's going to want to know at some point, you know, what's our five-year, 10-year outlook on parking maintenance, deck maintenance, equipment maintenance? So we have a clearer idea of what our challenge is in terms of taking any of these, or all of these steps. I think it's going to be helpful. I think the numbers probably going to shock us when we look out at 10 years or something like that, but, you know, I think it's prudent that we do that and take those costs into consideration as we make these kinds of decisions. Anyone else?
I thought you were going to...
Kim, go ahead.
I think I wrote a ton of questions, and some of you all hit some of the things that I had along with, that came with some of my questions. That tie back to the main four questions, like one of them was, does it have to be an hour? Again, considering, could we go less? I didn't necessarily say 30 minutes or 45 minutes, but one of my questions was, should it be an hour? Taking a look at dynamic pricing, and then I'm going to go through some of my questions just to throw them out there for consideration, and then I'll answer your questions. But looking at dynamic pricing, because again, thinking about the long-term and me being in a technological space, understanding how we have that set up. So are we using cloud-based to determine the dynamic pricing? Are we doing a, because we're going to use something maybe of a lesser cost instead of going to cloud-based, that means we'll only do the dynamic pricing by, like, say they'll study it for these many months, and then that'll determine the dynamic pricing because you don't have that consistent change based off of cloud data, which is always changing and consistent? So I had questions about that because that's going to, that literally is a large spectrum of what we would pay in costs to do that. I don't know if you've already taken a look, so I didn't have any additional information. Also, getting to some of the questions about the whole Amtrak idea, with dynamic pricing, can you have a daily rate max? So if we even still, like, say someone did, for Amtrak, used the facility, they would only pay the, that daily max piece? And then you mentioned if the utilization at the Trail East, Trail West spaces, did you say 15 or 50? I didn't hear that clearly.
I believe the study says 58 spaces could be gained from that.
Oh, 58, okay.
We would need to look at that more closely to see, but I think that's probably a fair estimate in terms of what's available. Maybe a little... in terms of what's available, maybe a little less than that, but. The first floor of the unused part of the college deck, I think you're referring to.
Because that's also, and the reason why, I guess, maybe for some clarification, so it's not seeming as random. We know that's also the space currently that they have the quote-unquote free parking for Amtrak is in that facility.
That's in that parking deck on the fifth floor.
Yes, so that's why I kind of, I'm putting all my thoughts together. I'm sorry. So that's why I asked. So yeah, I had quite a few questions. I apologize. And I'm kind of just, I don't necessarily need an answer. These are kind of my thoughts as we're having those, these conversations about this. I think it is very imperative upon us to go ahead and start talking about modifying rates for a myriad of reasons, which have already been covered. So I don't want to belabor that portion, whether it's thinking about current cost, you know, not even future costs, but just even the current costs to maintain our infrastructure as well as, we haven't done anything with it within the last 12 years. And I think it was even thrown out, should we have some type of plan in place to regularly take a look and modify? I think absolutely we should. I understand that there was reasons in the past why we did not take a look at this on a regular basis. One, encouraging more people to start to use the decks and different things. But I think we're seeing a shift and we have to prepare ourselves for, and also with the shift that has been used and probably used a lot. And we don't know what's to come as far as usage is concerned, but we know that there's still going to be lots of maintenance to come. So I think that's very important. First hour free, it's one of those things, again, does it have to be an hour? Can we take a look at something else? Yes, we want to encourage people to utilize for business purposes, whether it's, you know, I know people come and pay bills and tickets and things like that within the building. As well as, I think it was also mentioned, don't want people to start just using the roundabout as a pickup-drop-off space. And so to deter that and still utilize the deck for some of that stuff, would definitely like to talk, have some additional conversations on that. Free for Amtrak users, I am not, you know, I don't see the need to continue in that way. I mean, I get it, but I think, and not to discount the example used. I just know, because I also travel both plane and train. When I pay a $200 ticket, yeah, I think it is a little nice to not have to pay. But to pay a $60 Amtrak ticket, I wouldn't be upset to pay an amount, you know, to stay in the decks during that time. Again, going back to my question earlier, would we have a daily max even with the dynamic pricing? So I think some of that would have to make sense in that space. Paid-on-street parking and service lots, I don't see why we haven't done that. And so I think that is something that we should be talking about. Again, it is the most convenient parking. And I think we should be doing on-street paid parking, so. And I think the only other question I did have, and I'm just going to throw it out there, is I know we had the two options for like the install, the credit card payment, and the retain pay by phone. And I don't know if there's a way to possibly do both, or have we considered it? So we can ask more as things come along, but that's definitely something, because I know I've also been in communities where it's a little bit of both available. So that's all I have. I'm not going to belabor on it.
I'm just going to add one thing on the Amtrak parking, too, that I forgot to add in the last one. You know, there are myriad of users. There are people that will come in for the day. There are people that may do two days for a weekend. And there may be people that go use parking for two to three weeks. And so those are concerns. So some kind of taking that into account in our, if we decide to go to paid parking for Amtrak, I think taking that into account is going to be important, whether we do free parking, not free parking, and what that rate structure looks like.
I can share that dynamic pricing model would be available to us under the new system and might give us some options, not maybe make it free, but make it half the cost or set it back a little bit and free, but still make it a zone where you have some discount. So we have a lot of flexibility when it comes to that pricing model.
And we have talked specifically about a maximum for Amtrak partners if, riders, if we were going to start charging for that fee, wouldn't want to charge them any more than a monthly pass by any means. So we've had initial conversations on how you set the appropriate limits.
Correct.
If we wanted to go that route.
Andy, I'll get to you.
I have a specific question about dynamic pricing. Can you give me an example of what that is? I see on the slide deck, it said it depends on the event that might be happening or the time of day. Can you give me sort of a scenario of what that means?
Certainly. I think it can be priced differently throughout the day. You know, honestly, a spot, let's say a spot in front of a high-demand area of Uptown. Let's say by Medici or by Galway Press, something like that. And the owners want that they have those things turnover quickly from where customers come and go versus parking there for three or two hours and keep that spot occupied. So we could, under a very high, high tundra day, maybe like 10 to 3, the pricing could be twice what it is in the parking deck, you know, just to throw an example out there. And then it could fall back down to a lower rate when the demand's less high. So those would be decisions to be made in terms of where's the high demand? Where's the traffic congestion? Where's the, where do businesses want to have a high turnover? And that would drive what the rate might be in terms of for that day. Weekends might be cheaper than Monday through Friday.
As you say, it could be based on the day. Weekend could be cheaper than daytime.
Exactly. So I think, exactly. So Tuesday through Thursday could be high from 10 to 4, and then Friday we drop down. Monday, so there's a lot of different flow. If you get rid of the study, you could tell in certain parts of the streets, they had different customers using different needs at different times. Congestion was pretty high in the Uptown area for sure, but other areas it wasn't. So it would be a demand, a drive demand, whatever is the high-demand area and what the businesses might want to have in terms of flexibility, a customer would be part of this.
So businesses would have a say-so?
I think we'd have to involve them, certainly, to get their sense of this, because they would have an opinion. And I think we want to get, get what they have.
Okay. Well, I guess, another technical question I have, sort of technical. What assumptions are being made in this parking study about the development of Trailside East and West?
Sorry, could you, I couldn't hear you.
What assumptions are being made in this study about the development of Trailside East and West?
Yeah, so we went ahead and asked them to proceed with the study under the assumption that those sites may be developed. So you'll see reference in there, and I think even in Mr. Hune's presentation about, you know, encourage, as those sites develop, the development of additional parking, either below ground or on-site. So it was contemplated that those two areas would not remain parking lots forever. And part of that was predicated on if they weren't always parking lots, again, would there be adequate parking for the other, the other uses within Uptown? However, it was well-understood that they may remain parking lots well into the future. So you'll see the parking counts for each of those lots listed as part of the parking count, part of the parking utilization. I think if we dove into that deeper and if we said, well, we don't ever plan to develop those, those are going to remain some kind of surface lot, they would recommend that we gate those lots and charge because that is absolutely the most valuable parking, right? It's off-street. It's longer in duration. Those are either two or three hours in duration under our current rules. And they're obviously heavily utilized. So the study was a little bit, I shouldn't say a little bit. The study was intended to be flexible in terms of its recommendations. But absolutely, part of what the undertaking of the study back even in 2021 was to determine if, in fact, those Trailside East and West lots were no longer parking lots per se, is the remaining available parking in the decks, the streets, and the surface lots adequate enough to support parking? You know, the argument's always going to be made, I think, you know, like, best example is probably Sweet Corn Circus, right? Huge demand for parking for a two-day period. But I would equate it, and you know, colleagues are free to jump in or even feel free to disagree. But, you know, we don't build storms who are for 500-year storms. We build them for adequate storm, you know, because that's what you can afford. You don't build your systems to account for the worst-case scenario. And I look at festivals the same way. I mean, we're not going to build parking structures for the man that's two of the 365 days of the year. So that's what the study kind of tended to undertake. We're not going to, we're not going to overcome the argument of, I came down to the festival and I had to park three blocks away. You know, I mean, that says to me that we had a really good festival, honestly. And, but what it is trying to say is on a typical day or even, you know, Homecoming weekend or Make Music Normal or some of our other festivals that still, again, draw a lot of people to Uptown, but not at the same degree that some of our festivals do. Do we have adequate parking available to meet those demands? And that's what the study intended to show, and it says that we do. I think the, I'll go back to, we discussed this. It's not always, do we have a parking problem? It's do we have a walking problem, right? Everybody wants to park in the most convenient spot, even within a deck. I want to park on the second level. I don't want to have to go all the way to the fourth level because now I got to work my way down. You know, I mean, we get those comments a lot. The study, no study's going to undertake that conversation. It's a sheer math availability. And I think that it adequately represents, and I didn't go and answer more questions than intended, but I, related to Trail East and Trail West, related to existing activity as well as future development, what the study said was, yes, there can be additional development in the Uptown and that there's adequate parking to cover it. But they would encourage us with future developments to take parking into consideration and to encourage, to the extent possible, that some of the space be utilized to account for additional parking demand.
Okay, so it was, the assumption was that, yes, it would be developed, but that the flexibility of the study builds into it that if it's not developed, that it would be deemed a premium lot, if that's what its foreseeable future use was.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think what they would, I think what they did say is, if you, if you never develop and then it's a parking lot into the future, that you should, should not be giving it away for free.
Right, okay. So thank you for that. I guess, you know, I don't know that I can answer your four questions, to be honest. I think my answer to all four of them would be, it depends. Because what I'd like to see is, maybe this has already happened. I'd like to see a public open house whereby businesses and patrons could come and learn about the parking study results. To my knowledge, I think the company that did this, Desmond, sought their input, but that was also probably two years ago. I don't know if they contacted those entities again in this update. But I think it would be, seems fair, whether they contacted them as much as two years ago or sooner during the update, that the results be revealed to them, to consumers of the parking. And I say that because parking is a hot topic. And also, I wouldn't want to put our businesses here in our business district at any disadvantage to businesses in similar setting in downtown Bloomington. I think we could be borrowing trouble if we don't ask for involvement in the process of reviewing these results and evaluating the results. And then based on those, whether it's a charrette or whatever sort of cool thing you want to call it, then I would feel more confident with being able to answer, especially all four of these. I mean, I think some, some I have an inclination already, but particularly, particularly the one about on-street parking and the raising of the parking rates, to me, really does need a robust conversation now that we see the results.
And I appreciate that. I guess I would say the reason why we're here tonight, though, is to roll out the study and have a, start the public conversation. It wouldn't, I would suggest that it wouldn't be appropriate for us to roll this out to gauge public opinion if there's some sacred cow in here and council said, absolutely not, we're never going to change Amtrak parking. I mean, that, so staff, staff does need some direction from council. So I certainly appreciate your position and, but that's, that's why we're having this council conversation first, just to make sure that, that we're not moving forward on something that ultimately council says, absolutely not. I cannot support that.
Well, I mean, I think the crux of the matter really is in the parking rates and the on-street, off-street parking fee structure. I mean, that's, that's it, you know? I mean, I'm not saying that the $40,000 or $50,000 for the Amtrak parking is nothing. But, you know, I, I really think that the crux of the matter is in those first two issues.
I agree that public input is going to be an important part of this process. But I think we have to give them something more to react to than, do you want to pay for parking or do you not want to pay for parking? Because I don't, I don't think we need public input for that. The answer is no, I don't want to pay for parking. So I think what we're talking about here is to come up with some directions for staff so that they can pull some data together and make some recommendations. And I think that's the time to engage the public, where you can give them more specific information.
Give me an example of the kind of specifics you'd like to see.
Do we have, what, what on-street parking charges look like? You know, is it dynamic parking? What deck parking fees would look like? I think doing that instead of saying, do you want to, do you want to pay for parking?
I don't think I phrased the question that way.
Well, I'm not.
I think that to, to, to provide some guide rails for the discussion, to have a reasonable discussion. Because you're right, if you say you want to pay for parking, nope. You know, I mean, you know, we don't want to be that, I don't believe I'm that naive. So I would concur with you that some directed type of questions would be, or scenarios would be proposed. But I think you've kind of got those here. You know, you've got the proposed scenarios. Maybe not down to the dollar and cent, but I mean, maybe with a little more window dressing to it, you could, you could get to some of those, a little bit more specifics.
Well, let's agree that we're going to need public input as part of the process.
Great, that's my point.
Oh, Andy.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thanks, thanks to staff and the consultant for putting together the study and putting together the presentation tonight. We'll share a couple of quick kind of thoughts after reading that, hearing the presentation, and then I think I can provide some at least initial feedback on the four questions that staff has posed. So high level for me, I think that my top priority after reading the study is want to make sure that we have the long-term funds available to maintain our decks and our parking infrastructure. I think that we probably all know that the best time to start preparing for long-term infrastructure maintenance is now. So I think both on the Amtrak parking and on rates, I think I'm very open-minded to making sure that we are, that those policies match with that desire to want to make sure that in 10 or 15 years, we're not coming back with some large number in terms of an increase or change to meet the demand for maintaining that infrastructure. So on those two points, pretty open-minded. I think, I'm still trying to wrap my head around a little bit on the surface street going to paid. I totally understand like kind of the market value argument of, yes, the best, why is the best product not charged the most? And why is the worst product not charged the least? Totally makes sense from that value proposition argument. But I do think there's, it's a really nice service that we provide, uh, to normal residents, people that patron the businesses, to have that convenient, uh, free parking, um, with, with a time limit, of course, um, on-street and surface. So still trying to wrap my head around a little bit what problem we're looking to solve there. But I'm certainly open-minded, and if that is something that we pursue, um, I think, you know, to the conversation that's been had, I think important to do it, um, with a lot of public feedback and, and to make sure we create a policy that's, um, well-thought-out and robust, um, to make sure it makes sense. But overall, still trying to wrap my head around that one a little bit. So yeah, I think that, that probably gets my, gets me to the four questions. So the rate adjustment, open-minded, um, I do like first hour free. I'm open to, um, charging for Amtrak, uh, customers, um, going to paid-street and surface. Still kind of wrapping my head around that one. I'm at a high level, um, and I, and I'm specific to that last point, I'm on the, the street and surface. I'm not necessarily in a rush, uh, to change. Whereas, you know, I think I'd be, be quicker to jump in, um, in the short-term support changes to Amtrak, um, or rates. So that's probably where I'm at.
Uh, I'm gonna go backwards, Mr. Preston, I'm in.
Thanks, just a question for clarification to make sure I'm not misinterpreting. On any of this conversation, be it about rates, dynamic parking and whatnot in the decks, was there put forth the notion that, uh, the timing with which, uh, like daily parkers are paying changes? So the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM currently in the decks, despite for College Avenue and here, uh, is when, you know, people are paying after one hour, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. After 6:00 PM, um, there's then no charge unless you're overnight. Nobody's suggesting, or are they, to change that timing, uh, for daily parking? To where it will, won't, you know, it'll continue past 6:00 PM, for instance?
Sure, well, I think anything on the table in terms of changes, uh, those have been traditionally how we've done it, free on Sundays, pre-after 6 o'clock. Again, we have a lot of free parking opportunities here, and we didn't necessarily list that as a, circle back to the council to get your opinion, but it certainly would be something we would, we would probably ask a deeper question on if we came forward with a rate discussion and rate changes, uh, to the decks and to the on-street parking if that were also part of it.
Right, I, I agree with that. I would say that if, if we get to the point where we're coming back with an actual rate recommendation, it would be multifaceted. You know, first hour free and, you know, deck, um, College Deck and, um, Town Station Deck. And, you know, dollar per hour after that at X dollars, you know, rate. And then after 6:00 PM, it could be after 6:00 PM, still remains free if you come in after 6:00 PM, you know, something like that. So it would be, it would be all part of the same package, I think, when we look at the, a, a rate structure for the deck.
Glad I asked this, important distinction I hadn't heard.
Karen?
Well, apparently I'm the one who rides Amtrak more than anybody else on the council here, so. So I want to speak up about the Amtrak parking. In order to get it free, you do have to park at the College Avenue Deck, you do have to be on the top floor, even when it's snowing. You do have to trek it over here. So if, if there is no discount provided to those Amtrak riders, you will get, uh, more people parking in this garage. And I have been over there when I've struggled to find a free space, um, because the, what, where we're told to park, the lane facing south, um, I have found times when it is completely full. And then I wondered, okay, if I have to go to another part of this floor, are they gonna know I'm an Amtrak rider? So I would just caution you, um, if, if we, if we incentivize people paying more to park overnight or even for a long-term, um, day in that lot, you're gonna drive more traffic here, and, and I don't know if the space has enough, if this garage would have enough space for all those Amtrak riders.
It's, it's certainly something we'll have to take, in the whole formula, the puzzle picture of uptown parking, um, that, that is one of the many puzzle pieces that will have to fit together, so, for sure. We've got, you know, our fleet vehicles and, you know, that, where, where do they go? We could, we can move things around. So putting all these puzzle pieces together is ultimately our goal, it just might be a little bit at a time.
I, I do think we have to be cautious of making changes when the parking is going to be disrupted during construction.
Agreed.
Yeah, just to, um, Mrs. Reese's point, there's a lot to consider, financial and, and where we want people to stay. The Sundays are free because it's lighter traffic down here. We want people to come to Uptown and enjoy the area, so they, they can get here for free. It, it makes people available to the Uptown area for a free day. It's generally not that active yet after 6:00, same thing. So a lot of considerations, as, as Miss Reese said, is a big puzzle. Each part can, has a push-pull to what's, what we're doing and why. I mean, that's, it's more comprehensive than you can possibly imagine sometimes in terms of parking.
I would also add that, you know, on the dynamic pricing, as we model that, I think some smoothing of the algorithms that do that, I think is critical. People generally want to know what they're paying for something. And, you know, you don't want a scenario where it's granular enough that if I park here, it's gonna be X, but if on three spaces down, it'll be 75% of X. So some kind of smoothing in the area, I think, is an important part of the dynamic pricing.
Right, I think if we were to recommend that under council, uh, direction, it would be something we would start, kind of start small, uh, because you could go crazy with that, and you want to have good reasons for it. And our, our system would show very easily on, on, on your hand or your, your phone what, what the price is, but you're 100% correct, you don't want to go overboard if you become very confusing, difficult to manage.
I think we can all agree that our, our, one of our many goals will also be to minimize the risk of, um, complaints and, um, minimize some, anything that's administratively burdensome, so we all can agree on that. Kevin?
Maybe, there we go. Uh, just a last thought on, and I guess Miss Reese began to speak about, um, the burden of it, but also the communication of, as we continue this conversation, I imagine it's going to be a long conversation of different strategies over time. But as we initiate parking changes, um, I, I love the, uh, as one who often finds myself or have found myself in municipal own parking lots, looking at a sign going, does that mean I could park here or not park here right now? I don't know. A big fan of the, uh, a consistent signage across all municipal own parking. As we start to do those things, um, plans of communication as we start to look at charging and changing zones and introducing fees where there wasn't before, uh, as, is that we, we, uh, as a body, um, have a view of timing and time of these layered policies as they start to come, when possible, and certainly, you know, a, a public-facing communication. Again, I don't know exactly what that means, but that we give an overview of, of what's coming and when, so we can understand it up here and make sure that we're, we're getting a good view of it. And, and then certainly when we make those decisions, however, we can best get it out to everybody. I know our communications department does a great job of that, but, uh, but certainly, thank you.
Definitely.
So at this point, what would next steps be?
Sorry about that. Staff will talk about what we've heard tonight and then put together a plan for, um, and recommendations for what things look like regarding, um, some of these changes, if there, if there seems to be consensus. And so I'll, I'll, we'll all get together and make sure we heard the right things and talk with the mayor on, on next steps. I think the next steps is we, we work on recommendations, we come back to council, not to vote on it. As I said, this is, this is a long-term discussion. We've been having the same parking situation for, you know, a decade plus. So we, we want to move forward strategically and intentionally. And I, I can't say exactly when the public, uh, charrettes or public input meetings are gonna happen. We gotta come back with a, a strategy for council to look at.
So staff, uh, kind of adding some more detail to this than a potential, uh, public forum?
Yeah, we, we said from the start that we wouldn't, you know, it's likely many of these things won't happen until construction is done. We're not gonna implement higher fees or, um, eliminate Amtrak parking, or whatever the case may be, if, if people are struggling with inconvenience for underpass construction.
Right.
You know, so it's, there's, there's lots of pieces to work out, sure.
We've got some time for the development of the recommendations, the public input scheduling, while perhaps this, this other stuff that's happening in the construction.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Well, I have one question for staff. Did we answer your questions enough here tonight?
I, I think so, I think we've got some good direction, so I appreciate that. Lots to, lots to work through, um, you know, our goal was to get this study going. Council had been asking about the parking study, so this is it, it was a good conversation, I appreciate that. Now I'm gonna ask Ms. Davison, uh, 25 minutes or so for our presentation and council discussion. This particular topic, I don't want council to feel like we're being rushed. It's, it's more just to share with you what staff would like to do regarding a, an electric vehicle charging network. There are some grant programs that are becoming available. Before we start encouraging contractors to apply for grants, or if public grants are available to municipalities, before we start applying for public grants, we want to get a feel on whether or not council, you know, has the, the thumbs up for some of the things that we would like to do in terms of electric vehicle charging, um, availability. So Ms. Davison and Tessa Ferraro from, um, the Planning Department and Mr. Clinch from Facilities Management all worked on this, and Mercy's gonna take the lead in, uh, on the presentation. You have a copy of before you at your, at your seat, so. Mercy?
Excellent, okay, so we will.
Mark, you're not gonna get away with that.
She's hiding back there. So we do appreciate the time that is left before your meeting gets starts, started. So we will march through this relatively quickly because this is a high-level discussion. We're looking for some general direction as we move forward, as Ms. Reese, uh, mentioned. So I will see if arrow buttons work, okay. So we will just run through a quick history of how we got to where we are, some statistics on where we are, and then the questions that I alluded to a moment ago. So the history of EVs in Normal does go back to Mitsubishi, uh, announcing in 2009 that they were going to make an all-electric vehicle, very exciting for everybody. So a group of folks got together with the town at the head of, uh, the, uh, the effort to form EV Town. And that was around 2011. Uh, since then, we've really put our name on, uh, out there. We're nationally known as being a community that's forward-thinking about transportation, especially as it pertains to electric vehicles. So since the EV Town initiative launched in 2011, we have, um, as you know, um, we, we started by, uh, leasing a couple of European Mitsubishi Is so that people can test-drive them. This was back in the days when people didn't even know if an EV was a real car. We've certainly come a long way. Shortly after that, as soon as the American models were available, we leased six, we bought six. So we had a dozen EVs in our fleet, and we were able to, uh, to use them for, for many years. So, so these have been driving, you know, electric vehicles have been driving around Normal for quite a while. We, um, also took an opportunity with some federal grant money back around 2011 to start installing electric vehicle charging stations. So in this presentation, anywhere it says EVCS, that's EV charging station. So back then, we were able to purchase 47 charging stations. One of them was a Level 3, it was an Uptown Station for several years. The rest were Level 2, which just charged slower. And those stations were real simple, they basically put electricity into your car. They didn't, they weren't, they didn't have software, there was no credit card readers, they were just electricity for your car. Um, we've certainly moved on, um, in the world since then, which is kind of why we're here to talk to you tonight. All this technology has changed quite a bit. So, uh, we then also had Tesla, um, asked to put charging stations in our decks. We have eight of them now, um, also putting us on the map as part of their, as, as part of their nationwide charging network. And then Rivian came to town. So we're, you know, again, being on the map is, is part of the game for us, we are, we have quite the reputation. Currently, we're doing several things with electric vehicles and charging infrastructure. We, uh, there's a new group of people that are talking about EV Town again, they're very excited to keep our name out there. Um, we've, um, applied in partnership with the CBB for a grant to put a Level 3 charging station at Sprague's. It's part of a big Route 66 initiative that the CBB's been, um, plugged into, unintended. Couldn't help it. Um, we're also, we've created a ChargePoint account, which basically allows us to move forward with a nationally-known kind of network of charging stations. So as soon as we do own or lease, um, or host any charging stations, we can be part of the ChargePoint system, which means drivers would know where the stations are, whether they're available, how much we charge, et cetera. So ChargePoint's just a really nice system to be a part of. This picture is a lovely photo, is, um, the, uh, the Level 3 charger that's being installed in Uptown Station pretty much right now. So we will have a Level 3 that we own, um, starting here pretty soon. Um, we've put some funding in the proposed budget, which, uh, Mark can talk about later if you're interested in that. But as was mentioned, there's lots of grant money out there. It's a little unpredictable as to which grants we can apply for, what they would pertain to, and when they're gonna be available. We can continue to wait for that, we can continue to monitor, we can also potentially spend some of our own money if we would like. So that's one of the questions we'll have at the end. And then we're also studying charging policies, um, across the country with, um, different municipal issues, like, how do you set your rates? Do you charge or do you make it free? What do you do with, uh, fleet vehicles, et cetera? So we're, we're looking into all that. These are just some quick data points. We have quite a few, um, registered electric vehicles in McLean County. You can see from 2018 to today, um, we've gone up, you know, 623%. On average, electric vehicles are about 10% of the overall number of cars on the road. Um, so, so this is a significant increase, but it is a, still a small part of the overall cars on the road. But that number's getting bigger all the time. And so, and the projections are for, are for that percentage to go up dramatically in the next 10 to 15 years. So now we have about 1,300, um, registered in McLean County. This is what it looks like on a map. These are where these cars are registered. As the colors go from blue to red, it's a more, uh, it's just more vehicles. So on this map, you can see that the greatest concentration of registered EVs are on the east side of Normal and Bloomington. So I don't know why, but that's where they are. And we monitor this regularly too, we check the numbers every month. Um, as far as where are the charging stations right now, um, this map, uh, lets you know that. Um, the green dots, which is the most co- common color, those are Level 2 chargers. So those are the slower, the slower charge. Several of those are the same sites that, um, from back in 2012, when we installed chargers the first time. So they, they might be upgraded versions, but they're out there. Um, there's also, um, more Tesla chargers out there than there were before. There's actually a Rivian installation going in. So you can see it's, it's, it's decently distributed, but really you want your charging infrastructure to be quite well-distributed, um, geographically. So, um, as more, uh, chargers are installed, you're just gonna start seeing them fill in the gaps all over, all over Normal and Bloomington. Which leads us to our, our, our questions, and then there's one more slide after this with a map. So I'll just mention the questions really quickly. The first one is, how quickly are you hoping, um, EV chargers can be moved? How, how, what kind of priority level is this for you? Because there's, there are faster and slower ways to do it. Um, there's the grant path, which is a little more uncertain, potentially slower, there's buying things upfront, there's just being a host. We can just make space available and other people can come and put their charging station there. If we are in control of charging stations, if we own them or if we're leasing the spaces, are you still interested in allowing people to charge for free? Because right now, we do that, we allow people to use our Level 2 chargers for free. I will say that that is not as common now as it was years ago. And when people first started installing these, people were just making it available for free, so they were trying to prime the pump, get people excited. At this point, it's, it's not as common, especially when you switch to more expensive charging stations with all the software and networking. A question about whether, uh, there are opinions on owning versus leasing the equipment? You could go either way. And then the fourth one is, is probably the juiciest for discussion, and that is, what sort of priority locations do you have in mind? And this is where the map comes into play. And this is a map showing you, 1 to 10, one being the most, like, the highest priority, locations that staff thinks would be great for charging stations based on proximity to activities, the length of time people tend to be in those places, potential proximity to the interstate, but really more the, like, what's going on at these sites. Not surprisingly, it starts with Uptown Normal, um, Maxwell Park, number two, dog, there's a dog park, there's the softball complex, there's cross-country meets, there's all that. Number three, the golf course. And I'm not gonna march you through all of these, they're listed, but these are the kinds of places, these are the places and the types of reasons that we use to come up with this priority list. So that's the, uh, the quick version, because I know, again, we have a meeting coming up, so. Please, I can switch back to the list of questions, and I can also toggle back to the maps if that helps.
Yeah, um, I think the, the maps are helpful, but council certainly can, knows where our parks are and, and, you know, certain parks in, in Uptown, we've identified in priority order becau- because of how long people might go and stay. Maxwell Park, Champion Fields is a perfect example of when you go there, you're there usually for a while. You might be there for a softball tournament or a cross-country meet. And there's a lot of people that go there for events, so that's higher towards the list. I think in terms of these- I think in terms of these four questions, staff does have, we have an opinion. We have an opinion about many of these things. You know, I guess if you were going to ask staff, we would say, well, we would recommend charging for our chargers and getting away from the free use. We would also, and we would also recommend, while we could own them, and that's fine. I think our preference would be and recommendation would be let's lease or partner with a private sector company that takes responsibility for maintaining. We then would be wanting to set ourselves up for success by putting in the infrastructure to all these parks and these priority locations, so that there's a cost to that. And then, of course, kind of going in reverse order in terms of the budget. We can wait for grants, and you know how successful we've been with grant applications on many projects. But grant awards usually take quite some time to actually physically get the funds. So if time is of the essence and start building our network, you know, we are prepared to budget for some of this work and, you know, concurrently apply for grants if appropriate. But, but again, it's, we haven't really talked to council about your thoughts on electric vehicle charging network and what role you want the town to have in this. There we go. Now it's all...
Up to the mayor to lead the conversation.
Well, I'm going to start with some conversation here that, a couple of issues that come to mind. One is a lot of park locations, and I know we're doing that because we have ground in the parks. But, you know, I would like staff to really look at some opportunities that are non-park, that draw people. I think it might be more convenient. You know, I think the issue of the people that live in the community that have electric vehicles, my understanding is a lot of these people are putting home charging units in, and so that's going to address a lot of that. But the people coming into town might not necessarily go to parks. So, you know, looking at every opportunity to cite those. In terms of charging or user fee, I'm all for free electricity as long as we provide free gas as well. So I don't think we're going to do that. So to give you some history on why we have charging stations that don't charge is, at the time we installed those, staff did experiment or study making those a pay-for-use facility and found out that it was actually more expensive to get that equipment, set it up, and implement it than it was to give away the power. We made that decision to do that. But that model, that model has sailed, I think. From my opinion, leasing makes total sense because it's a fast-moving technology and changing. I don't think we need to own our own charging network. There are people out there that are doing this nationwide, and we should take advantage of that economy and scale. That's where I am. Kevin?
Looking at our time, I'll be brief. Yes, charge. Yes, lease. The grant conversation, I think that's an "and" conversation rather than either-or, but it depends on the grants. I don't know if there's infrastructure grants, even if we're leasing. I think, Ms. Reese, maybe you talked about, we're going to have to put in infrastructure, even if we're leasing to parks. So yes, "and" to grants. And then I'd echo on the location. I tend to agree with the mayor on business and activity hubs, where they're going to tend to come to. Certainly, if you spend any time in Uptown Station and read the license plates of who's on our chargers, most of them aren't Illinois. So they're not here to come to our parks. They're here to do business or stop on their way to the next. And so where are those cars going to be going? Certainly, our central business district, but our business centers and activity hubs is certainly parks eventually, but I think those two might be a better place, at least to start. Thanks.
Thanks. So I look at this in two different tracks. One is the maintenance and improvement and, you know, reevaluating of our existing town, you know, program with it, which, to me, that component is, do we start charging money or do we not for what we currently have in terms of chargers? I agree with the mayor. I'll be the first to line up when there's free gas, but until that point, I think we all share the roads, and charging is a, I mean, it's a no-brainer, frankly. But then, the other side of this seems like an entirely new, expanded enterprise that, I mean, candidly, I don't feel like I have enough information on to really know how I want to answer these. I mean, what's the industry, like, is this something municipalities typically do? Is it something that you have a lot of businesses doing or manufacturers or, you know, companies that, how's the locations in which they'll be installed? Like, I'm trying to grasp how this whole, where this whole conversation even came from and what is standard, you know, and get just more background information. So I don't know, for the sake of time, if those would be answered now or not, but I can't answer these questions without...
I will say, Scott, that, you know, being transparent and no conflict of interest. I didn't say free diesel, and I have a diesel car, so I didn't throw that off.
I do...
When the Criscoos free gas comes, I'll be first in line.
I do, I, it's a good question. I think, you know, I don't want to, I don't want council to feel rushed, but I think Mr. Clinch and Ms. Davidson might be able to give a little background in terms of what, what other municipalities are doing. There's a lot of grants out there right now for, for local charging networks to support an EV, nationwide EV system. So that's sort of what started our conversation, and then the growth of our own, McLean County, electric vehicle, you know, acquisitions and what we're seeing on the fleet, so, on the street. So, Mr. Clinch, can you give a quick update on where, how we got to this point?
Yes, I will attempt a quick update. So I would, in my experience over the last couple of years, of track and EV and the technology as it's changing, I would equate it to what I assume the Wild West was like at one point. It was very difficult to get a true picture of what was going on, what would happen, and what the right direction was. Put us in a position where we're, what we already knew was we were ahead of most other communities, at least in the Midwest, for what we already had in place. So we chose to update what we had that was failing. So Ms. Reese mentioned run to fail. That's essentially what we did with the Edens, which was the original deployment. Everything that we have in place is now back up to an in-kind replacement with modern equipment, minus all the bells and whistles. What we are seeing, or what we can tell that we are seeing from the folks that we've contacted and then also some consultants, we've got Verigia now, which is an ESCO company, just approved a contract for. They are also in that as a consultant. So they have helped us connect with some, some other communities. It's looking a lot like fleet, which I know is a priority here. But the deployment still is a little bit early to know what other communities are doing unless you're looking out on the west coast, frankly, from what I can tell. So what we're doing is, we are trying to line up to, say, we're not really on the bleeding edge because it is happening elsewhere, but we are positioned to be able to deploy to the best we can with the direction we receive. And it's going to sound like a not answer, but there's, there's just a lot of variables. It's, we almost need council to say, we want to wait for grants or we don't want to wait for grants, because it's a decision point as far as what we deploy. And then as far as where priorities are, what's, what's driving that more than anything, I think at this point, is if it's profitable. So we're probably not going to get a successful grant or success if we're a host for sites. Probably not going to see anybody come in for Level 3, or Level 2 chargers. They're probably going to want to deploy Level 3s everywhere because that's where the market is, and that's where you can make money. It won't, probably, from what we're hearing, it won't happen with Level 2s. Does that get you, I mean, there's...
And then part of this conversation is just, again, to give staff some direction, some feel on how council feels on this topic so that we can continue to move forward with a plan.
If I understood Mr. Clinch correctly, and then I'll leave it at this, because we're getting late. The private market is, I don't want us to be in a situation where town's putting out Level 2s, and then the private market comes in with a better, quicker product that also, you know, they can make money on. And Level 3s, I mean, what's, what's the point of us beating them to the punch with the worst product to begin with? My overarching on this is, it seems like, I love, you know, EVs, love Rivian, obviously, but I feel like we are, if we are at the cutting edge almost of this in terms of municipalities, I don't think there's enough information to make an educated decision. And frankly, just feel like it's, well, you know, council, what's your personal opinion on it? Without having enough data to really back it up in terms of what is the best direction.
Yeah, and I think those are fair questions, Scott. And but the, the point that Mark was making, it's, it's a fast-moving target. And that's yet another reason to lease equipment, because the, the market changes so fast. And I can tell you, I've, I've driven cross-country in an electric vehicle, and it's all Level 3. Every, every stop you make is Level 3. Level 2 is going to be relegated to the home charging system.
But we're talking about putting Level 2 in?
No.
Oh, okay. Just, it seems anecdotal, not think there's enough hard information.
Sure. Karen?
To answer your questions, so I think we should prioritize charging stations implementation. If we had a 623% increase from 2018 to 2023, and we now have a federal tax credit of $7,500, that should spur it. And I, I have heard some businesses say that in that legislation, it doesn't necessarily have to be an American vehicle if it is leased, because there seems to be some loophole in the way they wrote the legislation that a business use of an electric vehicle, regardless of where it was manufactured, would qualify for that $7,500 credit. So we may see more increase than we anticipate with that incentive in place. Charge for it, yes. Lease for the reasons cited, I think the technology is changing too rapidly to risk owning something. And in terms of prioritizing locations, I want to echo the other sentiments that the mayor and Mr. McCarthy have voiced, that I think it makes more sense to have them in business-focused areas. Because I've talked to somebody, because I asked her, how do you make sure you've got a chance to charge on the road? And what do you do while it's charging? She said, well, you, we usually try to find them close to something that we can hang out in for an hour. So if somebody is traveling, you know, that would be a shopping center. That would be a restaurant, and maybe even a movie theater. But I also think we ought to consider approaching some of the gas station owners to see if they would be interested in adding one or two charging stations there as a revenue stream, because they're not always going to, to have just people using gas or diesel.
Definitely.
Very quick. You ready to write this down? I agree with the mayor. And furthermore, agree with the ideas of the business and activity hubs for the points that you helped to articulate, Ms. Smith. And I would like to see us continue to be a leader in this area as we've already established ourselves, especially now with Rivian. And the fact that we're also at the crossroads of, you know, free, free major highways. So I think that makes us a natural. Thank you.
Guess it's my turn.
I'm going to be quick, except for one little thing I have. Charge, yes. Lease, definitely, and not own. Locations, I am definitely on board with taking a look at various locations. The only thing that I'm kind of torn on, and only because of some of the information I have, is about whether we do the upfront or do we wait for possible grants? And I don't want to say wait. I do know, matter of fact, we just voted on Saturday. NLC is taking up, doing, one of the resolutions was surrounding infrastructure, electric car infrastructure, as we're seeing increases. And we know sometimes there's a lot of opportunities that come out of that. So I don't, I don't want to say that we don't consider grants because rarely does NLC ever put something in place that doesn't follow through. And so if that's at the, at the forefront for, for 2024, I think there's going to be some opportunities coming for dollars for electric infrastructure. So I just want to throw that out there, and I don't want us to say, let's throw all of our money in when there might be some really soon possibilities.
Andy?
Yeah, we'll hit a, a couple of quick ones. Yeah, support charging for charging. Definitely support partnering with a private company or doing the lease option. I, I don't own an EV, but I drove one on a trip for the first time about a month or two ago. And what I found, the biggest thing I was looking for, I was trying to find somewhere to charge, as somewhere I could charge and also eat food, because there were a lot of places that had gas stations. But if you're there for 30 minutes or an hour, a gas station is only so much fun. So again, if there's creative ways we can bring people in to our businesses or our restaurants, I think there's a lot of value there. And then two questions that I have, that don't have to be answered now because we're already past our time here. One, do we have data or do we have ability to collect data on who is using our systems as compared, as in terms of locals versus folks that are driving in from out of town? And do we have any ability to collect data? What the breakdown is between those two, as well as where in town they are most likely to come to charge, right? I know we're talking, we have chargers here in the parking lot or in the parking garage. Are there a lot of people that, would there be a high demand for charging stations that are by our restaurants or commercial centers that are closest to the highway? I would just be curious on what, what data we could collect or have on that. And then two, just kind of on that, in that spirit, you know, how do we determine how many we lease? You know, what data do we have and what the demand is, and making sure that we keep up with that? Just trying to understand, like, what, where demand is and how that would impact, like, hey, we want to lease five of these. We want to lease 10 of these. Just be curious on kind of what the market is right now. So, thanks.
I, I appreciate all that, that very quick feedback from council. As you know, when we, in this particular type of program, if we're going to apply for grants, we have to know in advance what we want to do with the grant fund. So this helps us craft an effective grant application. Also helps us put together a plan. And, you know, hearing some of this in, in, other than Uptown, a lot of places that are business-directed or near restaurants is private property. So it helps us put together a plan on maybe how can we incentivize private property owners to get charging, a net, a charging network. So all of your feedback, while very on-the-spot and quick, is helpful for staff to, you know, to put this together a little bit in a stronger package and move forward. So thank you for that. Thanks for your time today. It's been a long work session. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and there might be a revenue model if we're going to private, private people and say, well, we could put it in your restaurant parking lot, or we could put it across the street in their restaurant park. I think we'll take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for a council meeting. For German.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
Aye. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. We'll be back in 10 minutes.[1015.82]